Good evening, welcome to Oconee County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, July the ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Daniel Haygood to lead us in the pledge. Please stand. The first time in business will be to approve the agenda.
Making motion to approve the agenda submitted?
Second. We have motion second, all in favor?
Aha.
Thank you, motion carries. Next time is statements or remarks from citizens. This is for anything not on tonight's agenda. We'll do that in just a minute. We've got the, the miller's rate portion. Yes, sir. Any statements or remarks from commissioners?
Yes.
I do want to just mention one more time about outdoor watering. This is our, these watering dates are, or days are in effect year round. But it's especially important for you follow them during the summer months. So odd number addresses on Tuesday, Thursdays and Sundays. And the watering times are twelve AM, twelve AM to ten AM. Even number addresses are Monday, Wednesdays and Saturdays. Also between twelve AM and ten AM. And just we've got a couple of guests here today to address the board. As remember, we adjusted our personnel policy on nepotism to allow constitutional officers to adopt a waiver on that. So we have, have two of our constitutional officers here tonight. So whoever wants to go first can come on it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, appreciate the opportunity to be here before you tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank you also for your support that you've given my team and I over the last four years when it comes to personnel, as far as salaries and, and personnel positions that we've gained over the last few years. Tonight, I'm here to make my declaration for waiver as prescribed per the HR policy that, that was ratified back in May of this year. I do have two policies, two employees that fall under this policy. And I think that the purpose of being here tonight is to explain that I have one employee who is the father-in-law to another employee. They fall within the same division. I inherited the two of them. They were not father-in-law and son-in-law when, when I took office. But subsequently, the, the one employee got married to one of the other employee's daughters during that time. And so pretty much the way we've got it in place at the sheriff's office is being a paramilitary organization. We do have a chain of command and a rank structure that allows for personnel to be supervised by people that are not in their direct chain of command. So the way we have it worked out is one of them is a patrol division commander, is the father-in-law. And then the son-in-law is a patrol division corporal. He has a sergeant and a lieutenant in between them. And at any time, if there's a problem that comes up between or with the subordinate in any way, shape or form, the patrol division commander would recuse himself and then that would go to the chief deputy or myself. So that, that's pretty much how we've got it handled as far as that goes. If you have any questions for me, take.
Any question?
Thank you very much.
Good evening, and thank you also for allowing me to come and speak to you. And I appreciate everything that y'all have done for my office and my employees. I too would like to waive my, the nepotism in my office. I do have one employee that has been with me for over two years now. She got married in May and that caused the nepotism in the office. I have a senior deputy clerk that oversees her. Well, I have a deputy clerk that oversees her along with a senior deputy clerk and then any other chain of command would go to my chief deputy. If there's anything oversteps that, that needs to be done, then I will reach out to the other constitutional officers to intervene and any other issues that I have.
Any question?
Any question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next time is approval of the minutes. This is for June fourth and June twenty-fifth. Everybody's received a copy. If there are no additions or corrections, we entertain a motion for approval.
Okay.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aha.
Thank you, motion carries. We're going to move into our hearing actions on zoning matters. So our first rezon is P twenty-four dash zero zero three-two, Life Mark Development LLC, rezoning from R-one to OIP at six acres on Julian Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is P twenty-four zero zero three-two, Life Mark Development LLC. This is located at the corner of Julian Drive and Mars Hill Road. It's parcel B zero two one zero nine eight eight. It's currently zoned R-one in the regional center character area. And the request is rezoned from R-one to OIP, Office Institutional Professional zoning for an office development at the intersection. This is the recorded platting your application. The concept plan, a slightly larger version showing the proposed building, two-story with parking in the rear. These are architectural renderings that were submitted with the application. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. Number four, the office building shall be limited to, to twenty-four thousand square feet. The proposed building shall have facade of predominantly brick and stone, eighty percent. And the office building shall have a pitched hip or well-hipped roof. Number seven, per previous PoliWorks Department of Review, an ADA ramp must be provided at the intersection of Mars Hill Road and Julian Drive for future sidewalk extensions across Julian Drive. Number eight, an updated traffic study shall be submitted with the preliminary site plan as required by the Director of PoliWorks. Number nine, a deceleration lane is required as indicated in, by the three fifteen twenty-three traffic impact study by A and R Engineering, which has the same ADT as the current proposal. And number ten, the entrance drive shall shift to the north to accommodate the design installation of a deceleration lane that does not conflict with the Mars Hill Road Julian Drive intersection. The planning commission recommended approval with the same conditions recommended by staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Brian Kimsey with Carter Engineering, located at ten thirty town, sorry, that's my personal address. Ten ten Commerce Drive, Bogart, Georgia. This, this site is being proposed as a twelve thousand square foot footprint, two-story, so twenty-four thousand max, bricked, entire building bricked. Under the requirements, eighty percent. The, the site will be serviced by water, the county water, onsite septic. There is an existing pond in the back, freshwater pond. There'll be an additional stormwater pond added to the site as well. The, the owner feels like this matches with the existing conditions. You've got three properties around the building that are large buildings, operated now as churches. And then one commercial building on closer to three sixteen that match very similar to this, this type of building. Outside of that, we, we'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for the rezon?
Well, gentlemen, I spoke to all of you probably two months ago when this rezoning first came up. At that point, there was included a warehouse. That warehouse has been moved, as he said. But you can imagine the amount of traffic this is going to generate at that location. And I'm pretty sure that Julian Drive will be, as it intersects three sixteen, right turn only. It may be closed under the renovations they're doing to three sixteen. So I think the fact that we got a Church of Jesus Christ Latter Day Saints right next to it, across from it, we got Church of Athens Church of Christ, a little diagonal, you've got eight to ten residential homes going in. And across the street, we have three acres that I own and my daughter lives in with her five-year-old. And across from that is five acres at least. And I see no reason it needs to go from residential to some sort of office complex. It did look nice on the screen, I'll give you that. If you were to continue down Mars Hill Road to the cul-de-sac, Malcolm Bridge is coming in. And from that cul-de-sac to the racetrack on the road to Monroe. It's about three-fourths of a mile. Right and left appear to be unoccupied and zoned office. I know behind the racetrack, they are putting in a car wash. So obviously that, that, there's probably twelve, fifteen acres off there. Car wash doesn't take up three acres. So why is this particular land to be rezoned, which is now residential? Why is there not another site just as accessible to the main roads, maybe even more accessible? And I worry, you know, Malcolm Bridge School is right around the corner. School buses are coming up and down that road. This is office industrial, office institutional is going to increase the traffic flow significantly, particularly at, at the early morning time when the buses are picking up the kids up and down Mars Hill Road. So that's really basic what I've got. But I've got one story real quick. I may have told you this two, three months ago also. I joined Jennings Mill Country Club, whatever it is now, if you know what's going on out there. About thirty-five years ago. And at that time, if you came down Jim Dangle Road, there was a stop sign and you could turn left and go back in toward Athens. And there was no three sixteen or anything like that there. And it was sort of a hill. And she, and it's pretty dangerous pulling out. So to Commissioner Don Norris, who was a friend of mine, I'm a lawyer, he was a claims adjuster. I said to Don, Don, we need a red light right there. He said, boy, we've got one red light in downtown Watkinsville and that's one too many. If Don were alive today. Thank you, gentlemen.
Walton.
Good afternoon, Commissioner, Commissioners. My name is Tommy Walton. I live at thirty-six eighty-one Mars Hill Road, property that I bought and occupied in nineteen seventy-four. So I've been there fifty years this year. I am diagonally across from the R-one piece of property which is proposed to be rezoned to OIP. And just briefly, and the tag team on the gentleman earlier, the notion that there is a city living zone or a red zone that's on the map that has a southern boundary of Mars Hill Road is, from my perspective, a suggestion. It says what could happen in that red zone. It doesn't say what must happen in that red zone. So there is no compulsion that requires the commission to rezon that from R-one to OIP. That if we have all of the OIPs located in one place, then it's not really dispersed city living. It's more turning Mars Hill corridor between Virgil Langford and Malcolm Bridge into a quasi, quasi-business zone. If you look as you're driving down from Virgil Langford Road to Malcolm Bridge Road, when I bought that property in nineteen seventy-four, all of that was designated agricultural or potential residential. There was no concept, I mean, land use planning was just beginning to be developed and put out there as a way for counties to control the development within the bounds of that particular county. So again, most of the commercial development was, as the gentleman said earlier, was to be from Malcolm Bridge to US seventy-eight and from Virgil Langford east to whatever existed or was planned on that end of that corridor. If you drive up Mars Hill Road from the connector to US seventy-eight, once you get to Virgil Langford, there is no institutional building other than a church that's visible from Mars Hill Road. This building on the corner of Julian Drive and Mars Hill Road will be an anomaly. It will be a two-story brick facade building in the middle of a corridor that is well-kept by homeowners that have owned their property for many, many years. It is agrarian in nature. It is what people often see when they drive down, coming off US seventy-eight, going to the connector to come to Watkinsville, that attracts them to Oconee County. It is just that sort of homeownership, attention to the right-of-ways. I've maintained my own right-of-way. It's full of centipede grass. The county doesn't do anything for that. The notion that in the staffing report, under staff analysis item A, it says the nearby lots are predominantly zoned AGR-one and OIP. Actually, if you take a look at the land allocation between Virgil Langford Road and Malcolm Bridge Road, by my count, there are about four hundred and three homes in that area. There are approximately four instances of spot zoning that are in either B-one, which is the Greek church, OIP, which is the McGriff Scruggs Insurance Building at the corner of Julian Drive and three sixteen, the Mormon Church, which happened to fall into an OIP. I'm not sure why. I don't know that one has to have an OIP to operate a church or to put it in an agricultural zone. The Greek church is listed as a business zone because they do Thursday night spaghetti dinners and rent their place out for weddings and other things like that. So that was another spot zone. So out of four hundred, out of all of the territory between Virgil Langford and Malcolm Bridge, there are about four spot zones for various things. Three of those are churches. One of them is the McGriff Scruggs Insurance Building and the other one is Allen Hunter's storage warehouses down on the end, which on the other side of that are two residential lots between the storage warehouses and Malcolm Bridge Road that are still zoned residential, which you're going to be asked to do something about at some point in the near future. Summit Ridge, I think, did an excellent job, although I was in opposition to it because the easement runs right next to the east side of my property. And there's a lot of traffic in and out of there. There are thirty-four buildings. But they did an excellent job because the, the, the office condominium complex itself is not visible. The only thing that's visible is a nice entrance and a fountain and a sign that says Summit Ridge. Once again, if you're building a two-story building on a corner lot at Julian Drive and Mars Hill Road and you're driving down there, you're gonna, you're gonna go, where did that come from? That is so odd to see that in the middle of a residential corridor where there is nothing else there but visible, but churches. And only two of those, the Christian church right across the street from me and the Greek church did another good job. All you can see is their entrance. You really can't see their building. So Allen Hunter's is the only place that stands out. All of those places are low use. Now, the one, so with that in mind, while I understand that OIP is something that can be done in the concept plan of two thousand and twenty-three, the upper south side boundary being Mars Hill Road, but it does not have to be done. I am, my major concern is traffic flow. I'm at that corner. I've been at that corner for fifty years. I think Sheriff Hayor can tell you how difficult it is to control traffic coming up there that has become a through route for dump trucks. It's become a through route for eighteen-wheelers. If any, I would say more than fifty percent of the cars already don't stop for the stop sign at Mars Hill Road and Julian Drive. They just look right and left and then they keep rolling. School buses will, you know, just to continue very briefly, it's already congested. I wouldn't be surprised if there's not some need in the near future with six hundred and fifty-seven designated additional cars going in and out of that intersection at Julian Drive that you're going to have to reconstruct that, that intersection, put in a roundabout, put in a traffic signal, do something. The speed limits are out of control on that already. The emergency services use that as a more direct route from their station on Virgil Langford to US seventy-eight or to Malcolm Bridge. More congestion is going to delay emergency care along that road if they continue to use that route to get to emergencies or healthcare issues in the area. So just, that's a misnomer, that the area is predominantly infused with office and industrial enterprises. It is barely punctuated. When you do the math on that, it is one one-hundredth of the territory between Virgil Langford and Ma, and Malcolm Bridge Road that is office or instit, or institutional or professional. So I am, number one, opposed to it being changed from anything other than residential. And secondly, if it were to be changed to OIP, and this gentleman granted permission to build a building there, from a visual standpoint, it would be consistent to have that be more like a campus where there are trees and there is permeability to the, for the groundwater to be reabsorbed into the ground where there wildlife that exists there now, the hawks, the owls, the ground squirrels, rodents, deer that graze in there in the early mornings have some place to be and aren't driven out, once again, from a basically agricultural and residential area. I've listened, just to kind of briefly summarize this, I could keep going. I've got notes on every issue with the staff report. As it was presented, it seems to be biased in favor of OIP and development of those issues as per the two thousand and twenty-three concept plan. The language of predominant is just an example. There can only be one thing that is predominant. And in that area, it is residential. To this gentleman's point, there are actually eleven houses within spitting distance of that place. I could, if my arm was better and I wasn't seventy-eight years old, I could probably throw a rock and hit all of the houses. Now, just intended outcomes. The intended outcome for this is simply one thing, convenience to the property owner that wants to build that property there. And I get that. It'd be nice to be two miles from your house and go to work. That'd be really nice for most of us. The unintended outcomes are this. It violates the community integrity along the Mars Hill Road corridor between Virgil Langford and Marsa and The unintended outcomes are this. It violates the community integrity along the Mars Hill Road corridor between Virgil Langford and Mars and Malcolm Bridge Road. Number two, it reinforces the notion of spot zoning. Is that something that you want to reinforce? Number three, it increases light, noise, air, and visual and aesthetic pollution. Summit Ridge did a good job, however, every Saturday morning, starting at about eight-thirty, lasting until about noon, there are at least four or five people right beyond the buffer, which is eroding because they planted Leyland cypress instead of something else, and they're dying from the bottom up. So I can see them and they can see me if I were to stand naked in my bedroom and somebody wanted to look at a seventy-eight-year-old body, they could easily do that. But starting on Saturday morning, there are mowers, blowers, hedge trimmers, trimmers of all sorts that are going full speed for four hours. I have no Saturday morning unless I'm locked in my house with my windows shut. Now, there's going to be somebody over, that's because they don't want to do it while they're at work. They want to do it while I'm on my leisure time, trying to get some rest. I'm still working, so trying to get some rest and respite from my work week. Now, across the road, there's going to be another facility that's going to have mow, blow, and go. And they're going to be doing that on Saturdays or Sundays because they don't want to listen to it either. But they don't mind those eleven homes surrounding that, listen to the buzz and hum of those gasoline-powered devices going on. So light, there are a hundred and eleven lights that I can see from my house that stay on all night long, every night, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. A hundred and eleven. And we're going to add more. When Wendell Dawson, when they put the first stop traffic streetlight out there, I don't know what year it was. It must have been nineteen eighty or something like that. I called Wendell Dawson up and I said, Wendell, you're taking away my night. Well, I didn't really know anything about having your night taken away from you until there are a hundred, and you don't either, until there are a hundred and eleven lights that you can see from your house anytime you walk out the door, front or back. And we're going to add more. Two minutes. Thank you. It really betrays the trust placed in the, you know, rezoning that betrays the trust placed in the commissioners by people that purchased their property predicated on the land use plan in existence at that time and have stayed there, developed their property, maintained their property, made that a wonderful section of the county to drive through, save the, the amount of traffic on there. And six hundred and fifty-seven more trips up and down Julian Drive a day isn't going to help that one bit. Again, if it were to be landscaped differently, I don't think that's going to eliminate the safety problems. I don't think it's going to eliminate the pollution problems. I don't think it's going to eliminate the, the difficulties and stress that are not observable academically in the development of a staff report by a planning commission on the residents of that county, all four hundred and fifty-two, all four hundred and two families amounting to about sixteen hundred people that are going to be affected daily by rezoning that to an O I P. Thank you.
Already all time's been used up, so set for thirty seconds if you'd like to say something for a few seconds.
Of course, I couldn't talk, as eloquent as they did. Our family has been there for eighty years. I've resided at thirty-five eighty Mars Hill Road. Our family has been on the corner of, of Long Road, Mars Hill for eighty years. And of course, during that time, a lot has changed. I'm being to say, I'm not against change, but if someone wants to build a, a, a business, then there's designated areas for those businesses, not in an agricultural residential area. And, you know, I'm sorry that I didn't get to speak much, but thank you guys for the work that you do and for the time that you spend and service you give to our.
Mr. Kim, you got some time for rebuttal if you might.
Thanks for the comments from the two gentlemen, three gentlemen. Just a couple of things to reiterate. We're bordered to the west B one. We're bordered to the north O I P. There is a buffer, required buffer on the eastern property because it's incompatible use. So that entire landscape strip that's there now, which is trees, will be, will remain. The landscaping that we have shown on the plans now is a row of trees along both Mars Hill Road and Julian Drive. Part of the reason for having the building in front of the parking is to eliminate seeing a massive parking lot from, from Mars Hill Road. So that's the reason the orientation is where it is. The building is closer to, to Mars Hill Road. The owner, just to, just to reiterate, the owner purchased the property with intent of moving his business from Lawrence. Well, I didn't say that initially. And he, he's not opposed to any of the conditions the staff recommended. So thank you for your time.
With that, we'll go ahead and close public comments and open up any questions from Commissioner.
Here, okay. I'll start off. Did you pull up? Photo overhead. Church across the street. What was that for?
I don't, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it was a, it was a facility for young adults, for all kinds of sporting activities. It was baseball, gymnastics. It was, it was built for that purpose when it was built. Dankinavich. Yep.
Notice. If I ask you, you can. You know what the zoning is? That's where the O I P zoning came from originally.
So we show it as A G on that parcel with portion of it as R one.
I think the, if I remember correctly, I think the R one portion of it was bought when the church took it over. They actually purchased the rest of that land as part of their church. But the original A G with the building was just the building by itself. They didn't have that house as beside it, which the church now owns.
So when business was there, was it classified as A G?
I think it was still A G.
Our zoning map shows A G. I, I don't know at that time.
That would, that would have been the business. Now I ask you, what do you remember?
Well, it was, it was.
Excuse me, sir. Would you come to the microphone, please?
Commissioner Horton, it was agricultural. The Rudolph, Mr. Rudolph of Ru Wood purchased that piece of, that R one piece of property and built his house there. That was simply a small brick building, which I think still exists on that property and was agricultural. It was part of the original subdivision for development. But that corner was, as far as I can remember, back in seventy-four, was always agricultural.
But when the church, the church purchased the property, um,
From the youth, from the, I remember the youth authority. I thought it was kind of weird because I don't remember anything about rezoning or anything coming up at that particular point in time.
Yeah, I wasn't on the board myself. I just remember going in and I do, they just bought that one spot and then they, when the church took it over, they bought the R one portion of it to be.
Yes, they, they did. That's their administrative office is up in the old Rudolph House.
There was some kind of business.
No, there was just a building.
But there was some, something going on inside the building.
Yes, I have no idea what it was. I mean, it was.
Kind of sporting.
Yeah, it was a sporting event.
Prior to, but prior to that sports authority, there was just a small building on that piece of property, very small.
Built a brand-new building once that Canavish did when he, when he put that in. I don't.
Thank you, Mr. Walton.
Yes.
Are you thinking, Guy, could you come up and pull the site plan up again? Just for the benefit of everybody, to the, to the right of their parking lot, is that the drain field?
Yes, sir. This is the proposed septic drain field.
Okay. And in the back is the detention or retention.
Yes, sir.
Is it already there?
There is an existing pond, and you'll see this portion as a future pond.
So, so I'm just going to ask a question. I don't, but I rely on staff to, to express their opinion, but you always have one, right?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything to prevent the building being built toward the Latter Day Saints Church?
Well, as the applicant state representative stated, the idea was to ensure that the parking lot was not in the front along Mars Hill.
But does it have to be on the corner of Mars Hill and Julian Drive? That's just what they want?
I think that's what they're proposing. I think ideally, we would not want to see a, a large parking lot along that road either from a staff standpoint. But as far as I know, there's no issues with that portion of the property. That would be something that you might want to ask the applicant.
So from a, from a order standpoint or land use, is there anything to prevent a parking lot in next to that detention pond? Just ask.
Not, not that I'm aware of, but the, the applicant engineer may be able to shed more light on that for you.
Just asking. About the traffic count, the six fifty-seven that was stated in the applicant's report, you, you didn't have a, a comment in your staff report. You just made mention of that. You also said in one of the conditions that with the, I guess with the site plan, there'd been updated traffic study. What, what will, what is that going to tell you then that you don't know now?
We will require a revised one. There was some mention that maybe this would not meet or reach that six hundred and fifty. But we wanted to know for sure. So in our U D C, the code gives the PoliWorx director the authority to require additional traffic studies if he feels it's necessary to determine impacts or mitigation. And that is what he has done here. He's exercised that option. And so that's why, why we put that condition in there.
All right. And I guess this is more of a question for the chairman or anyone else that might know. Have we heard anything else out of the D O T as far as what will happen at Julian Drive and three sixteen?
No, we've not had any follow-back up from that first.
All the options they've laid out on the table are still options.
Options that were last presented at the last meeting was to cul-de-sac both sides of Julian Drive and not no access.
Oh, that's the last.
That's the latest.
The latest, not the last one. It's just the latest. So any timetable, I know they're talking, they're moving pretty quickly with Jimmy Daniel Road and Virgil Langford. They're pretty quick on that, but no, no timetable on.
Instruction's not scheduled till twenty twenty-eight for that, so they they got plenty of time in their minds to figure that out.
Okay, right. Thank you.
Could you put the site plan back up there? Mr. Kimsey, I got a question for you. So if you move the building and the parking lot, I guess closer to three sixteen, you see any engineering issues with that?
No, we may have to move it anyway because part of the stipulation about the D cell lane, we may have to move the entrance to accommodate that anyway. So it may have to shift back, shift back some. If you remember, the original plan had a building back there. And so it was just left in the general location it was before. So that's the, that's the main reason you see the location where it is. Although we do feel like, and the client feels like, that it is going to be an attractive look from Mars Hill Road. But there's nothing to say that it couldn't shift back.
The, one more question. The septic drain field, would that stay somewhat in that same area or would it move as well?
It would probably move as well. Closer to the, I mean, the, the soils are good in the area, so we can, we can shift it. I mean, it could stay there, but it could shift closer to the building. Cost, just like cost.
If we're talking about the location where it is tonight, we're not seeing any kind of design where there's a move. If we were to approve it, based on them, they can move it, but that doesn't mean they have to.
That's right. I would suggest an, an additional condition stating that the building and the parking would be moved to the rear of the, of the property, to the north of the property.
Your expertise is better than mine. How far would it have to move to accomplish some of the concerns that the folks have?
Mr. Kimsey, what is the width of that parking lot? I mean, just from, just roundabout numbers.
About a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five feet wide.
So if you moved it a hundred and twenty-five feet north, then that would be sufficient.
It would be sufficient. We would want to make sure that we had a good buffer behind on the backside. And then I don't have it in front of me, but I think there is a, yeah, we're, we'll miss the drive. The drive for the church property would be further closer to, to, to Mars Hill Road, so it shouldn't be an issue.
You have a question?
I got a comment. I don't have a question. And I know Mr. Herring is probably going to sit there and cringe whenever. But I've had this conversation with him. You know, I think that what Mr. Walton and Mr. Horn and others have mentioned tonight is the, is not just the aesthetics, you know. I think it is kind of odd to have a building of that nature right on the corner. I, I appreciate the conversation about maybe shifting it, but it doesn't alleviate the, the issue of the traffic and what that corridor is today. And I think it's incumbent upon us to, to maybe take that in consideration of, you know, preserving, you know, that corridor where it is today because this is my personal opinion. It's not, not anything other than the word creep, C R E E P comes to mind. And I know it's a no-no. The planning professionals don't believe in the word creep, but I do. Because when we approve this, then it's going to keep creeping right on down Mars Hill Road. And unfortunately, you know, the people who should have attended the, the planning for the comprehensive plan did not show up. And they don't think about it until the rezon sign show up on the streets. And then they start looking and say, wait a minute, this whole area is, is, is Mr. Wa- uh, Walton mentioned was red. Uh, I guess it's conducive. So, um, I just, I'm, I'm concerned about, you know, if we, um, once we start and, and as I tell people, they say, well, it's already over there, you know, talking about Summit Office Park. I said, well, I wasn't on the commission when that was brought forward. I said, I'm not sure how I would have voted, but I don't think I would have voted for it because there was a chicken farm right next to it. Where the sites lived, all the Gary sites, they had chicken houses back in there. So, uh, so I'm just, it, it's more philosophical. It doesn't mean anything other than just, I wanted to kind of put that on record that I'm concerned about the creeping of commercial development, uh, down Morris Hill Road. Thank you. I think churches, I do believe the churches have to go under OIP to the zone. So that's where that, that's just the way it is. Uh, but I do think churches are different than businesses. Being built, churches being built in neighborhoods, part of the community, whether you go to that church or you don't go to that church. And they generally operate maybe two days out of the week, Wednesday night or something. Weddings and, you know, but it, I think, I do think it's different than, than the office. And I do appreciate both sides. I, I will honestly tell you, I wish folks would come at the planning commission meeting and say something. Kind of, it, it does help commissioners, it does help me because I was here at the planning commission meeting. And hearing the citizens, it does, it does give me something to look at.
Anyone else? We entertain a motion?
Nah, rezon P two four dash zero zero three two, Life Mark Development LLC rezoning from R one to OIP, six acres, Julian Drive.
Motion and second to deny rezon request P twenty four dash zero zero three two. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Be opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next rezon is P twenty four dash zero zero one four, Barack Zuckerman. It's rezoning from AR to B two. It's twenty-three point five one acres at seventy-seven six, seventy-seven sixty Macon Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Again, this is rezon P twenty four zero zero one four. Uh, Barack Zuckerman, owner, applicant. This is parcel B zero six zero two nine A, a portion of. It's currently zoned AR in the Civic Center character area. And again, the request is rezoned from AR to B two to develop sixteen lot commercial subdivision with a proposed one hundred and seventy-four thousand five hundred square feet of commercial buildings. This is the recorded plat. This is the concept plan. This is in your application packet. A slightly larger version, uh, proposed architectural renderings. And staff recommends conditional approval with our three standard conditions. And number four, the development shall be limited to sixty-eight thousand square feet of building area until a second entrance is obtained to meet the requirements for two fire apparatus access roads, unless all buildings up to a hundred and twenty-four thousand square feet are equipped throughout with approved automatic sprinkler systems. Number five, interparcial access stub outs and an easement to the north along the entrance drive shall be shown on the preliminary and final plat and site development plans. The northern interparcial access will be constructed with a temporary cul-de-sac meeting requirements of section ten oh eight oh two. Private access drive shall allow interparcial legal platted access to parcels to the north of the rezoning area through to the G dot right of way to the south of the rezoning area. Number six, all proposed buildings shall have facade of predominantly brick, stone, or glass, eighty percent. Accent materials are allowed as indicated in UDC section three oh six oh three. Number seven, the following uses shall be excluded. Dollar stores, variety stores, five and dime, massage therapy establishments, car, motorcycle, recreational vehicle, and boat dealers, pawn shop, cigar, cigar and tobacco stores, including vape shops and electronic cigarette stores, tattoo parlors, and used merchandise stores. The planning commission recommended approval subject to the conditions recommended by staff. Thank you.
We'll hear from the owner of the agent of the owner.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. Herring, oh, thank you. Um, thank you for your time as well. We've been, uh, working on this site plan and, and this general area for, for several months. Uh, trying to make sure that what we accomplish here is a, a project that makes sense for the area, makes sense uh, for the retailers and, and tenants that we've talked to that are interested in being here. The conditions set forth, uh, most of them are completely, well, they're all reasonable. Uh, and, and we don't have a problem with any of those conditions. Well, I have an opinion about one, but we'll, I'll bring that up in a minute, but, uh, 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 those, most of the conditions that are on here are safety conditions such as the size of the buildings and the, the drive and the, the circle turnaround. Uh, so, so none of those are an issue for us as all, at all. Uh, our goal here is to have, uh, the, really a tapestry of retailer uses and tenant in office uses that can and medical uses that will, uh, be able to be incorporated into a project like this. We've done it, uh, more than once, and, and we'd like to, to continue to do this here. I know that in addition to this rezoning, we have a few variances that we'll bring up as well. Uh, and those have been, um, requested, uh, we only have three. And the reason we've requested those are because either one, we have a specific tenant, or there is something specific in the code that we wanted to accomplish, and I'm happy to discuss those as they come up. Uh, separately, as I said, I have an opinion, uh, good or bad, I don't know. Uh, we feel that, I feel that the eighty percent for brick and glass and, and stone, it's a little high. Ideally, it'd be about sixty percent. And the only reason I ask for that, well, two reasons. One is because I believe that there would be, uh, a, a little bit more variety, uh, per the building. And also because as you saw from our architectural drawings, some of those buildings and some of those tenants have their national and corporate identities, and we'd love to make sure that they can at least uh, partially display those in whatever format that they see fit with the understanding that we will have the stone and, and, and brick and have a, an overall look that will reflect the, the, the area and still keep the area very nice. I don't know if that, if, if there are any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them, or should I put you guys? Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak for the rezon? Does anyone wish to speak against? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment, open up to any questions from the commission.
Guy, could you pull the, the conditions back up? Kind of hard to find it. And Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, I missed the gentleman's name. Do you, can you repeat it?
Yeah, Rock Zuckerman.
That was Mr. Zuckerman? Okay. Just want to make sure who, uh, who was talking to us. Thank you. Question I have, Guy, maybe not specifically to, to the application, but maybe a, a bigger picture on a conversation, maybe just for the record. Because tonight we're looking at just, you know, a one piece of property, but if anybody's familiar with that area, they know that what I call the Ivy property, that's between this track and, and Hog Mount Road or to the traffic light, with the exception of the bank and, and the, uh, convenience store. And we've, we've approved development across the street, what used to be the stone store, I think it's O'Conie Mercantile, that development. Uh, and then, of course, we recently approved, um, some for the Quick Trip. It is not a part of this development. It's on its own separate track. But we also approved, uh, you know, the Presbyterian home has an office they want to build. We approved for an ice cream shop, I guess, you know, if we'll ever see that. Of course, there's a car wash. Everybody has to have a car wash, right? It'll kind of help, it, help me understand, or maybe for the record, let's talk about the adjoining property. And is there anything that we should know tonight that would help us make a good decision as far as how this will impact that whole intersection? Because you mentioned that he's only going to have one ingress, egress. And that's at the traffic light with the Quick Trip. Well, that tells me that there must be something planned for a second entrance somewhere else, but it's not on the site plan.
Right. Well, so, um, let me just take us back to, maybe this is the best map, shows the, the largest area to look at. So as, as you mentioned, the Quick Trip was rezoned for this portion of the, the current zoned property as well as the lower track. So we have a Quick Trip going at this location that's under, uh, construction review, uh, uh, development permitting, uh, that will have an access to this signal. Uh, this, the subject rezoned this evening will also have access to this signal and will be required to have interparcial access at this location to, as you mentioned, the Ivy Track, the formerly, or Ivy or formerly known as Ivy, Ivy Track, that also has access to Hog Mountain Road. Which, as you mentioned, on the other side, Presbyterian was rezoned for a medical office and, and the small uh, ice cream shop and also has access to the, uh, the car wash. And then on the opposite side, on the, uh, eastern side there is the, the old O'Conie Bank Operation Center that was rezoned for redevelopment. Um, which will also have improvements at that intersection as well, the intersection of Hog Mountain and four forty-one, uh, when it is developed. And there also is a median break at Woodridge Lane that has access. So anything south of here is limited access. Um, the subject rezon parcel does not have, uh, access to four forty-one. Uh, but this parcel does have access to four forty-one, uh, at that median break. So at such time as this parcel, the Ivy parcel is developed, they will be able to access four forty-one as will the subject parcel this evening because of the interparcial access that is required between those two parcels.
I understand that the parcel that's zone B two, I mean, it's, it's zoned.
It is.
All it has, all they have to do is, is present their plan to the planning department.
That's correct. This was a B two parcel from original adoption of the zoning map in nineteen sixty-eight.
It's been like that for a while.
Yes, sir, it has.
So he- help, help me understand or remind me, you know, the concerns that, uh, we've expressed and I think you, you've addressed in the past, but again, for the benefit of the record tonight, what, what's going to happen out there on what we call the Hog Mountain Road? I mean, are we going? I mean, we, there's only one traffic signal that's going to be put out there, I'm sure. So what was, what's your big picture?
We've had our, um, in-house, our, our third-party consultants, uh, traffic, uh, engineers look at Hog Mountain and how that might look. And, and there is a possibility of either a, a left turn, right turn, or possibly a roundabout at that location. Um, so those are things that we'll look at during the design and construction of any of those developments. Um, and of course, Poliworks will be, uh, will be prime on that, making that decision.
Because what we're being asked to look at tonight, the only ingress egress is off of four forty-one. But when the bigger picture is, is revealed, there's going to be a, another entrance that could possibly access Hog Mountain Road.
But that's correct. And then that's managed and administered by Poliworks and our department, yes, sir, through our traffic consultants.
So it's not just impacting only four forty-one. It could impact Hog Mountain Road one day.
That's right.
Which may be sooner than we think, right? I mean, we don't know, but.
I, I don't have a crystal ball, so I don't know, but.
Well, we're closer to that day than we were yesterday, I would say. Was there any conversation about improvements to that intersection at all, the DOT, as far as where Hog Mountain Road comes into four forty-one as far as the mathematics?
Not with this project, no.
Not with this one, but the big picture, aren't they talking about maybe having to make some?
So if, if you recall, for the, um, O'Conie Mercantile, the, uh, O'Conie Bank Operation Center redevelopment, there were proposed improvements to that intersection uh, that would be required of that developer at the time of construction.
So how, how, how long has the DOTs reached down Hog Mountain Road? How far can they impact how that is developed as far as their intersection?
So their limits of access or limits of, um.
Know what they're going to change. Are they just right there where the racetrack comes, you know, their back entrance?
Right, yes, sir. Those, those were the plans. And then, of course, from, uh, from the, uh, the Mercantile side, that leg would have to be redeveloped or improved, uh, at that time.
But I know it is a good bit of traffic that hits that intersection. Well, it used to be just.
Every morning.
Well, now it's all the time, it seems like.
Yes.
Uh, and it, 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 it tends to back up, uh, especially in the mornings because you have the traffic. People going to Athens Academy or going wherever. So it backs up, back to, I guess, is it Lake Wilbrook Road or whatever road that is, it backs up a good little bit there.
Yes.
So, uh, so I'm, my concern is that we make sure we see that tonight, even though we're looking at this one, that we have the benefit of what the big picture is for that, for that whole area.
Right.
Thank you. Got a question. If it's approved, when would you start the project?
We would, the, the first phase, which would be the, call it sixty-eight thousand square feet, we wouldn't, I, I, we would start fa- fairly quickly, uh, meaning by next summer, we would assume that we would have three or four parcels built out of the sixteen we're proposing. Uh, what I'd like to say, though, is, um, two things. First of all, a site such as this, which is twenty-three acres, we typically see two hundred and fifty thousand square feet. Even what we're proposing here, being a hundred and seventy-five thousand, is actually probably more than what we're going to build. Uh, what we wanted to do is, again, show a concept that would make sense. I'd also like to say that the O'Conie Mercantile and even the Ivy Track, uh, really have a different character than our proposed project. Uh, not completely, but for example, the, the O'Conie Mercantile, the, from the plans that I've seen, it is a, a more office. It's an existing building. They're going to build around it. It's a, a, a very different character than what we're proposing, which is more traditional, uh, retail. And with the Ivy Track, I mean, I, I haven't seen any final plans, so I don't know what they're going to do. But the, the idea that we have, uh, uh, But the, the idea that we have a road going from Hog Mountain to the QT to make it highway, just make sure, it really increases the, the, the quality of that overall development. It keeps all of those retailers in one spot as opposed to just going anywhere. And, and having that concept plan, we believe helps with that project. I hope I answered your question as well.
I think I'm just, because what my colleagues talking about the traffic, that this is not enough, like, project, it's going to take a while.
Yes, sir.
16 parcels to be built out.
Yes, sir.
And I would, I'd say my opinion on the brick and mortar, if they want to come here, they'll come.
Okay. We also did a, we also completed traffic studies on this project. And we, those traffic studies showed, based on the plans, that we would be able to conform to the county requirements, which are even more than DOT, I think. So that's something that we don't have a problem with and we believe will alleviate some of those traffic concerns, at least on our intersection that we're, we're starting on. What, sorry, sorry?
Said, I'll hold you to that.
Well, it's, it's in, it's in the, it's in the paperwork, we have to comply.
A lot of things in paperwork. I got a two-part question. First question is, is that, did your traffic study include Quick Trip at all when they're coming out?
Yes, the traffic study was performed by the same engineers that do most of the work in the county or several of the latest projects. They were, they did include the QT as part of that. So that was all incorporated into the study.
And second, the, actually egress, as far as it's concerned, do you see a partnership with Quick Trip when it comes to building that egress out of there towards the red light? Because you're going to have cars coming from your, your, your build out from Quick Trip build out and they're kind of be, kind of in twine, trying to get, ours is going to come out and try to go right.
Correct.
And there's going to be a little backup right there from your section. Have you looked at that, how that would affect you with Quick Trip traffic coming out?
Yes, sir, so, so I know that this plan doesn't exactly show that, and I apologize. We have, over the last several months, met with and talked to both Quick Trip and the DOT. We have worked through that where the roadway that Quick Trip is going to build and is permitting currently is sufficient for the first phase or second phase of the project. So the road will, the roadway, which is actually, that parcel is actually owned by DOT, will be built both to the county standards, DOT standards, and will immediately accommodate our needs for the property. We have a paperwork in place with QT. We've worked through easements for access. All of that is in place, and that's why, again, that entrance will be in place already.
Have you done any projects placed by here?
Yes, sir, well, not in O'Conne County. I've built in Clark County in Athens. I built the Kroger at Hull Road. I guess it's now called the Space Kroger or Trail Creek Village, as we like, we prefer to call it. I did, I've developed the entire property, that's a 30-acre property with Kroger. Several parcels, the Car Wash, Taco Bell, Whataburger just opened, Take Five, and then all the shops around it, which included the Pet Sense and all the restaurants that we've incorporated. So that's a, that was a 30-acre project that I did, just down the road. Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll entertain a motion on rezoning request P 24-0014.
Make a motion we approve rezoning P 24-0014, Barack Zuckerman. Rezoning from AR to B2, 23.51 acres, 7760 making highway with a seven conditions.
Motion and a second to approve rezoning request P 24-0014 with seven conditions. In discussion? All in favor? Repose? Motion carries. You have three variances to go along with this. There will be variance P 24-0027, P 24-0028, P 24-0102. Guys going to present all three and then we'll take motions on each one of those when it comes to.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, again, this is variances P 24-0027, 0028, and 0102. Again, subject parcel, zoned AR, civic center character area. And request number one, or P 24-0027, the applicant is requesting a variance from UDC Section 806 and Table 8.1 to reduce the required landscape buffer from 25 feet to 10 feet for 412 linear feet, as indicated on the concept plan, along a portion of the property line with parcel B 06028. This is the corner of the parcel that is bordered by the border regions or UGA property to the rear. I think we have a full-size plan right here. And the portion that we're talking about is this corner that pinches in on the property at this location. And it is only that portion, as identified on the concept plan, for 412 linear feet. And staff recommends that this does meet the necessary conditions to grant the special exception with our one standard condition. Request for P 24 is usually 28. The applicant requests a variance from UDC Section 60404 and Table 6.1 to reduce the minimum required parking by 50% on one proposed parcel. You can see it highlighted here is this parcel. The parking variance is requested for the end user to reduce the overall required parking by 50% at the time of development. Staff believes this does meet the necessary conditions to grant that special exception variance with our one standard condition. And P 24-0102, the applicant requests a variance from UDC Section 101207 to increase the maximum allowed lots from five to 16 on a private access drive easement. Again, this is the entirety of the private access drive that would have the 16 lots accessing it. Staff recommends this does meet the necessary conditions to grant the special exception variance with our standard three conditions. Number four, the interparcial access stub outs and an easement to the north along the entrance drive shall be shown on preliminary plat and final plat and site development plans. The northern interparcial access will be constructed with a temporary cul-de-sac meeting the requirements of Section 100802. The private access drive shall allow interparcial legal platted access to parcels to the north of the rezoning area through to the G dot right of way to the south of the rezoning area. Thank you.
Again, thank you. The, the variances that we're asking for are specific for the uses. The first one, which is the landscape buffer, the only, and, and I don't know if we can put that drawing on, the reason in, we've, in addition to meeting with the DOT and QT, there's a power line that goes across that property. If you see, it's marked over there on the, the left-hand side. And so what, what happens is to access the property in the back, which again, we don't know what's going to happen with that property. We're not asking to rezone it, we're not asking for, we, we, we're just going to leave it at B. But to have access to it, we have to work with QT, DOT, but also the electric company. And typically, they don't like to have roads in their right of ways. So the request was just in case we needed to shift our road closer to the road around that traffic, the, the, not the traffic, the electrical pole, which we're going to have to replace anyway, that, that we'd have the ability to do so. So that's, access is, is the issue in this specific zoning variance request. The second, or let's go to the third, which is the road that goes all the way across. This will be a temporary request, because once it connects with the north parcel, the Ivy parcel, once it connects to Hog Mountain, we wouldn't, we will not need that variance anymore, because it would just be a regular road. So that specific request is a temporary one while, until we develop the property. The third, the second one, which is the middle one, has to do with one specific tenant. I hesitate to, to say who it is specifically, because they have not committed. They are a tenant that requires somewhere to 30,000 to 40,000 square feet. And they are a typical, they have a use that is, doesn't require parking as much. So this 40,000, 30, 40,000 square foot building, as shown on the plan, instead of needing about 220 parking, they only need about 100. What this would do is, it would allow for us to, one, just have less parking that isn't required for that user. It would not change, however, that every other parcel would have the standard requirement. And since we look at a project like this as a whole, so does the county and so does the parking requirements, where as a whole, we will still have the overall parking requirements that will be needed for the entire project. There's a numbers for shared parking that's, that is allowed as well, and we would still conform to that. Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak for any of the variances presented tonight? Anyone wish to speak again? That will go ahead and close public comments. Any questions from commissioners? We'll take variance P 24-0027 first. Motion and second, approve variance P 24-0027 with one condition. In discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next variance is P 24-0028.
Second.
Have a motion and second, approve variance P 24-0028 with one condition. In discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next is variance P 24-0102.
Make a motion, we approve P 24-0102 as submitted with the four conditions.
Motion second, approve variance request P 24-0102 with the conditions as presented. In discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Our next item will be discussing, consider the 2024 tax millage levy. So advertisement for the setting of the 2024 millage has been requirements of OCG 485-32 met. Will thank the Tax Commissioner for getting us the information in a ti, in a very timely manner of this, this year. Allows us to go ahead and take care of this now. This will be the fourth consecutive year for dropping the millage rate. And this will be the third year in a row for a full rollback. Also, for the unincorporated areas, the new millage rate will be 4.435, represents a full rollback as calculated by the Tax Commissioner. And the incorporated areas will be 5.375, which is also a full rollback in the, in the incorporated areas. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Do we have any public comment? Oh, we lost Mr. Webb.
Yes.
He wasn't staying. No public comment? Very, very good, we'll entertain a motion for setting the 2024 tax millage rates.
Second.
No, a motion is second to set the unincorporated rate at 4.435 and the incorporated rate at 5.375. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is discussing, consider the 2024 tax millage levy for O'Conne County Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The school board has transmitted, has approved and transmitted their 2024 millage rate of 14.25 mils. We received the email today and the request is for the Board of Commissioners to confirm the millage rate.
Any discussion or questions on that? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we accept the 2024 housing millage levy for O'Conne County Schools Maintenance and Operations at 14.25. Second.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. Next item is discussing, consider the termination of that portion of the former right of way of Hodges Mill Road. No longer serves substantial public purpose, authorize.
So as you know, the, the abandonment process is a two-step process. And the first thing you have to do is declare that the piece of property that we're talking about, which formerly was part of Hodges Mill Road, no longer serves a substantial purpose. And then the, kind of the second part of that is then to authorize the abandonment process. We'll run an ad in the paper notifying adjoining property owners. And there'll be a public hearing on the issue at, I guess, the regular meeting in August, I got to hear fast. And so tonight, you have in front of you a, actually probably the best sketch we've ever had. But a sketch that shows the location on Hodges Mill Road that is no longer part of the right of way, of course, y'all know it anyway, but it's that curved piece that was eliminated. And it's shown designated on the sketch you've got as owner of O'Conne County, kind of a tan color and then a green.
Any questions from commissioners on this item?
Got one, just curious, I'm, I've never thought about this, but if we declared as surplus and, and we put it out, what does it go over, what's the zoning designation for it when it becomes along with sort of private individual?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And yeah, I think what we do is we put the zone of the adjoining property. And this is actually one of the rare cases where it's enough right of way where that kind of matters. But we'll, we'll look at that and be sure we've got the correct answer.
But I, I mean, I'm just curious, because there's residential, I mean, I'm sorry? Yeah, I mean, they have, are they going to lose access? Those three, are they owned by the same people?
So the, the one track, when I look at this, I, I think that except for one very small part, what I've looked at before is it's all owned by the same company. They've, they've been busy acquiring.
And those three parcels are currently zoned what, like, do you know?
Off the top of my head, I don't.
Okay.
It, it has not been back in front of us before a rezon. So anything they do, there won't be a concept one in. They'll have to come back and ask us permission.
Man, I, I don't want to be approving tonight or whenever we vote on this, like a B1 or a B2 zoning without some.
Well, I mean, you've got to fail-safe on all this, right? Abandoning it does not mean you have to dispose of it. After we finish the abandonment process, it's still the county's property. You can then decide or not decide to sell it. And if you decide you're going to sell it, you go through the process and put the zone in on it if you want it. You're not, all, all we're doing now is saying this isn't part of our road system.
I'm just kind of setting the tone for my questions eventually. But I am curious, is what does it revert back to the original zone? But it's always been a county right of way.
There actually is a right of way deed where it was acquired. Now, I don't know if it was a dirt road before that. But the, the reason we know that we get to sell this is that it's just reporting to the adjoining owners, because there are actually right of way deeds that were acquired with that, that deed.
W C Land, it's three of those houses.
Any other questions on this item? Do we have any public comment? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve determination that a portion of former road of Hodges Mill Road no longer services a substantial public purpose and authorize, did I get it right? Abandonate procedures.
We got a motion and second to approve, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next item is discussing, consider the FY 25 payment connection contract, Melissa? Next item is discussing, consider the FY25 Family Connection contract. Melissa?
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. We have received the FY25 contract. This is a renewal of an annual agreement with the Georgia Family Connection and the state of Georgia. And the contract will begin July 1st, 2024 and carry us through June the 30th, 2025. And it provides the county with funding $56,250, which is budgeted in grant revenues and expenditures in the FY25 budget and does not require any match from the county. The county would be the fiscal agent for the grant funds, which will be used to support activities and services to children and families in our communities. So the request this evening is your approval of the contract and to authorize Chairman Daniel to sign the agreement.
Any questions from us? Any public comment? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the contract.
Second.
We have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. We do not have need of executive session, so Commissioner Sacks?
Motion adjourned.
We are adjourned.